Good evening, everyone. Today is March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the Northborough Planning Board. My name is Amy Peretzky. I'm the Chair of the Northborough Planning Board. This open meeting of the Northborough Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Chapter Two, the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three. An act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the Northborough Public Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. This meeting will feature public comment. Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie, are you here? Millie's not here yet. Amy, I'm here. Staff? I don't think we have any staff with us tonight. Meeting ground rules is for the applicants. We have no applicants tonight. It is now six oh three P M. First on the agenda is the continuation of the consideration for the common driveway. We did receive a letter that they want to continue until the April fifteenth meeting. So do I have a motion? Do I hear a motion to continue? The consideration of the application for a common driveway special permit site plan approval in the residential A District for three seven eleven Reservoir Street, map forty-two parcel fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, submitted by the estate of Robert Romeo for April fifteenth at six o'clock.
So.
Okay. I'll give it to Brad. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Anthony. Roll call vote. Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, we'll continue that on April fifteenth at six P M. Also, on April fifteenth, Lori said we're gonna have a scenic roadway in an A and R. Next on the agenda are the are the proposed amendments to the bylaws for town meeting. I'm going to pull up the application. Not the application. I'm gonna pull up the bylaws that Lori had sent out with some changes. Say. Okay. Do you see them on the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, these are the zoning articles. She updated on March thirteenth. The first article. Say, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven articles now. The first article had no changes. The second article she updated to go along with what we discussed last meeting. Does anybody have any questions on the update? Okay, the third article has to do with accessory dwelling units. Lori and I attended that meeting March eleventh by the state, and she updated the bylaw according to what she heard during the meeting. So she added information about fire code. She added the sentence to match what the state had for accessory dwelling unit definition. And she added a line about non-conforming structures that they talked about at the meeting. And then she added this other statement that they had that talked about Title Five. Does anybody have any questions about any of these? I mean, Lori's not here, but. She pretty much added what the state discussed. I don't think she's gotten word back from Town Council yet about any of these. The next bylaw had no changes. No changes. Sign had no changes. So the last one where she had changes was on the inclusionary zoning. She updated it like we discussed last week to change it to the word development. I can't even remember what the word was anymore, but.
I think it was project. Amy, I think you brought it up. Yeah.
Yep, I did, but I still couldn't remember what it was. So, yeah, those are the changes she had. Does anybody have any other comments about the bylaws that we're gonna bring forth at town meeting on April twenty-eighth?
Nope.
Nope.
I'm gonna look into the audience to see if anyone in the audience has any questions, concerns, comments. Actually, I don't even see anyone in the audience. Says attendees zero.
Yeah, Amy has a second set of eyes. I don't see any attendees as well.
They lost them all.
Well, this is.
After the first two jobs going through it. Right. Okay. One thing I thought of doing tonight since, well, Millie's not here yet. I thought we could pick who was gonna present which article. But we could do it at the next meeting also. It's not an emergency. We could. Now, the Select Board are going to, the warrant's gonna be closed on the twenty-fourth. So, we could close this hearing and vote on them. But for now, I think we'll leave it open and wait to see if Millie's coming. I'm gonna text Millie really quickly. See if she's on her way.
Maybe what are you doing? That Bill has his hand up.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, sorry. So, I still, so no changes were made to the signs bylaw, right, or the signs item? Because I had brought up before I have a concern, a procedural concern with the, you know, the date and the timeframes. Because the the Design Review Committee only meets once a month, but you have a twenty-day timeframe in there.
I mean, we've talked about it a couple of times, and if if we can't meet, then it's gonna be just approved by Mr. Frederico, which is the way it's done now. This gives us a chance to meet, and if we don't, then that's just what happens. But as the board sits right now, there are some applicants that can't make our scheduled meeting day, and they ask us to change it by a week, and right now, the way the board is, we're always very flexible. We can meet whenever they want. It could change. The makeup could change in the future.
Right, but and that's my concern, right, is you're putting this on paper, right, without without a real charter as far as when when the meetings happen.
Well, we meet the second Thursday of the month. But if it has twenty days, the only change that happens is right now, the sign downtown would come in front of Design Review. If we can't meet within the twenty days, then it follows the same process it's following now. So it's.
Right, but but you're putting in writing that, you know, it should happen, right? So if somebody else were to come, I'm not saying you would do this, but if somebody else were to come in ten years from now, right, and change how, change the makeup, it's a procedural issue that you don't have enough time to be able to actually talk about this if you want to.
And other things in the Planning Board. In the bylaws, it says that all of our applications go to the police chief, the fire chief, Board of Health, and sometimes they don't answer. So it's the same. It's similar to what we do for applications now with the Planning Board.
Right, so so does the applicant meet with the police chief and the fire chief and the Board of Health?
I don't know. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, depending on if they need it.
I think they just, they just, those, all I've ever seen is them just send us a letter with their views.
Okay. There's a technical board that Lori and Bob, they all meet with the applicants when they first come through.
Yeah, I'm just, like I said, I, you know, my feeling is I just can't approve something with that glaring of a procedural issue. I mean, I agree with the rest of it, but.
No, I don't see it. What do you propose?
Well, if they set the charter, if they if they want it to be twenty days, right? If they set the charter to be, they meet twice a month, right, like the Planning Board does. Right, we have, we have items on the Planning Board that have to be done within thirty days. That's why we meet twice a month. If you're gonna have a timeframe of twenty days that something has to be approved, then you should be meeting within that twenty days.
So that could miss our meetings. It's to make it twice a month would be a big ask for Lori and Michelle. Because the majority of the time, once we're finished updating these bylaws, we might not meet again for six months. If we only meet if an applicant comes forward and someone requests Design Review. So if someone comes through with a sign, we can meet. I mean, we could change the charter that we meet as needed.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I just think as the charter is written right now, it doesn't make sense. It's a procedural issue that, you know, if somebody were to look at this, they would question why we voted yes for it. Why would you agree to that? At least in my mind.
But we can take votes, and you can vote against it if you want.
Yeah.
So let me see if Millie replied. Millie hasn't replied. So I don't know if I even want to vote on the articles before, you know, without Millie.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we want to vote with, you know, a member not here.
Right. So for now.
How much time do we have for these?
Well, they're gonna close the warrant articles, three twenty-four, March twenty-fourth, but they could still close it without us voting. Like, I talked to Lori today, and she didn't tell me that we had to vote today. And, you know, I've left the public hearings open on the bylaws all the way up to the day of town meeting before. So I don't know the rules about if there's a date that we have to vote on them, or if we can just vote on them. You know, the meeting before town meeting, and then when we present them, we say, you know, the planning voted four to one in favor, you know, or three to two.
Sure.
So I don't think there's.
Does that just imply that no more changes?
Yes. No more changes.
Okay, yeah, I think, my opinion, I think you can leave it open.
Right. I think I vote too, for Lori and for.
Yeah, Lori and Millie. Yeah.
Millie. Okay.
So I think Lori has to say, I mean, Bill brings up a good point, Amy. I mean, I don't know how much work it would take if you just extend it to thirty days since Design Review does meet once a month, or, but, you know, that's, like you said, it's a big ask for Lori and Design Review to meet twice a month, so.
Did I? Just want it at thirty days, because Bob has to approve it within thirty days.
Okay.
So like, if we don't meet, then it's approved by Bob.
Got it.
Which is how it's done right now.
Okay.
Amy, are you saying that you guys meet at will when necessary? So you got.
Yeah, all the time. We met, there was, when we were doing the Design Review Guidelines review, there was a couple of times where we met, like, every week.
Yeah.
And there was the last applicant couldn't meet on the second Thursday, so we said, well, we can do the third Thursday. That's how they used to meet. I don't even know, if I look up our bylaw, we might not even have it saying that we meet once a week. We, as a board, to make it easy on the applicants, said that we'll meet we'll meet the second Thursday of the month, but it might not even be written in zoning that way. I can look it up fast if you want, but I don't think we specify. It's an advisory committee, and we always just, before I was on the board, I actually said it at the first Thursday of the month because they didn't have a set meeting, and I thought it would be easier for staff and the applicant if we had a specific day to leave open. But let me look up Design Review right now. Design Review.
And like I said, this isn't about, you know, the current makeup of the board. This is if the makeup of the board were to change.
Yeah. But you know, it only says it on the, we could change it without time meeting. Like, it's not in our guide, it's not in the bylaws, so we meet the second Thursday of the month. It's just what we do. But there's no, it's not like the Planning Board that meets the first and the third. There's no bylaw that says we have to meet the second Thursday of the month. So we could change that on a whim. We could change it and say, we'll meet every week. It's not, it's not something that's stated by the bylaws. I don't even think it says it online. We've just done it to make it easy for Lori and for Michelle, so they'd have the set time and date. But yeah, so it doesn't say it in our bylaws that we meet once a month on a Thursday. It says that we review and meet, and so, yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? We'll just leave it open. All right, so next on the agenda is a discussion of the letter from MPIC and NAHC regarding the housing production plan. And at the last meeting, Lori agreed to send out the master plan and the housing plan. Not sure if people had time to read it. And I just wanted people's opinion. I can give you, I am the rep for the MPIC, and they meet on Thursday, so I can let them know what we decide. But they just went through all the goals from each board and said, you know, Select Board, you look at A, B, C, Planning Board, look at D, E, F. And so they wanted us to look at the housing goals. Do you want me to call up, pull up the letter from Rick, or you don't need it?
Yes, please.
Let me see. I just have to pull it up on my screen. Okay. There we go. All the different letters open, so I have to pull up the right one. Hmm, that's not the right one. Oops. You guys see nothing probably, right?
Oh.
So this is showing my Zoom screen. What's hard is my little share screen is in the way. Trying to get over to the next one. Hold on a minute. If I close this. I don't know why my little tab bar is in the way. There I was, ahead of myself. Now I'm falling behind. Okay. I'm gonna move the file. Hmm, sorry. Does it come up now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. And my bar was hiding the tab for me to click on it. All right, so this is from the MPIC. And I want to hear what everybody else thinks, but in my my opinion, we really are busy, like Lori wants to do the subdivision rules and regulations. She hasn't been able to start yet. She also wants to do some downtown revitalization. I feel this year that we did the MBTA, ADU, and now we're going for inclusionary zoning. And the state has a lot of moving pieces with housing. To me, I feel like to do a housing plan right now would be putting the cart before the horse. I'd like to see how the dust settles. I feel like the consultants we talked to are still learning all the latest and greatest that's coming down from the state. I don't know, and I looked through the two thousand and twelve plan, which I thought was great. It talked about Northborough. It talked about how great Northborough is because they were ahead of the ten percent. And only twenty percent of the towns right now are over the ten percent. It talked about how in two thousand and nine, we added cottage housing. We added mixed use. We added multifamily. They tried for inclusionary zoning, I read, in around before two thousand and nine, and it didn't pass. So we'll see what happens this year. But that was the main thing. It was asking, in the plan from two thousand and twelve, it said, try the inclusionary zoning again. And it talked about the different developments that have housing. And so, in my opinion, I really think we should wait to see how everything plays out, but what do you, what do you all think?
So Amy, when you were doing that research on two thousand and twelve, was there any explanation as to why it didn't pass, what the pushback was back then?
No. It will, it said that, and actually said that the developers came to the meeting and shot it down. It actually had that in writing, that the town had tried it in the past, and that there was a group of developers that went to the meeting and shot it down.
That surprises me. To me, it seems like kind of a no-brainer. It's like a built-in safety mechanism to keep your affordable housing where it needs to be.
This isn't the inclusionary housing. This is the housing plan.
Okay.
So we are definitely gonna do inclusionary housing.
Yep.
And that was part of the bylaws, but this housing plan is something further that the housing plan will tell our town, you know, what we should do, what we would recommend going forward for for housing, which is would be adding mixed use or adding MBTA, or you're adding all those. But yeah, inclusionary zoning was just mentioned in the housing plan. That's something to do, which now we are gonna try to do it again. But I've already jumped to the next part where MPIC wants to know how we feel about doing a housing plan or any of these other goals. And I actually think one of them impacts the town services we've never done. But I just wanted to know, do you guys feel like we should say, yes, we're gonna go through with a housing plan this year? Or no, maybe we should wait till next year and see how everything else plays out?
How do you feel like from the state perspective and MBTA and all that? Do you feel that's all solidified at this point, or do you feel like it's still fluid? You know?
I, I feel like it's, well, MBTA is solidified, but I still think a lot of things are fluid. They might add more housing.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's still fluid. There's just another town in the news falling a lawsuit against the state. So I think there's like maybe up to five towns that are filing lawsuits against the state. I know we passed it without any issues a year ago. So I think we're good there, and just, you know, my two cents on this is I think we're doing a good job with housing, and I think we're staying ahead of the curve by adding an inclusionary housing bylaw for town meeting this year. We are over the ten percent, and we're doing everything that we can to stay above that ten percent threshold. We did pass the MBTA Housing Act at the Economic Development Forum in December. It was very clear that close to sixty percent of the three boards, Select Board, Zoning Board, Planning Board, said that housing is, is not a priority. It's opposed to housing. Anything like, anything to do with that. My time, I'm still on the zoning board, but we recently passed eighty-eight unit assisted living, which I think falls under the housing options for seniors. So I think we're in good shape. Personally, I don't see any rush to do this now. I would wait another year just to see what happens and see what happens at this town meeting regarding the inclusionary bylaw.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Oh, mine.
Yeah, I am as well. I think with all the changes, it's, we need to let things sort of settle down, especially with the lawsuits that are still out there and still pending. Right, if MBTA were to get revoked, that's gonna make a whole bunch of more changes.
Yeah.
You guys okay with Thursday? I'll go forward to the MPIC, and I'll just let them know that, you know, it's on our radar, just not for this year. We're gonna wait, let the dust settle.
Yeah, yep.
We don't vote on this, do we? You just.
I don't think we have to vote on it. We can, if you want to. Maybe we should, probably, just in case they ask.
Voting on tableing it for next year, you mean, until next year? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Maybe we will take a vote in case they ask how the board felt.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
Do I have a motion to table the housing production plan and discussions about housing until the year two thousand and twenty-six? We can re. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we can let them know Thursday night. Thank you. Millie, we had gone over to the zoning bylaws, but in Lori's changes, but we didn't add anything but Lori's changes. And I just wanted to double-check to see if you had anything, anything that you wanted to talk about with the zoning bylaws.
No, the last draft that she put out, I think it was on the fourteenth. Oh. The thirteenth, that's the most current one then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it included everything we were looking for, so.
Right, yeah, she did. Since we're all here, would you, as a board, would you guys like to vote on what bylaws we want to propose at town meeting this year? Or do you want to wait till our next meeting? It's not really an emergency.
You mean which of these we want to put forth, or which ones we, as individuals, want to put forth?
As individuals, which one we wanted to present, I should have said. The first three have to do with the ADU bylaw, and then there's lot size, land clearing, signs, and inclusionary. But if we want to, we can decide who's gonna present one if they, if they want a month to practice. If not, our next meeting will probably be April fifteenth, so it will be at least a week before town meeting. And we can decide that night which bylaws we each want to present.
I'd like to just review it again, and then if we could wait till next meeting, maybe best.
Okay.
That'll be fine. It seems like there's still been quite a few changes, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with any of them as a presenter at this point, other than definitely.
And Lori will be back too.
Yeah.
So, okay. Did I'm trying to think, they are closing the warrant on March twenty-fourth. Do we want to go down as a board and decide how we vote as a board on each article? So if they are printing it, the vote will be in the book. If not, we can always say that night of the meeting that the board voted. If not, we can always say that night of the meeting that the board voted, you know, four to one in favor. So it really doesn't matter either way. I mean, we could leave it open. And wait for um, Lori, or we can um. Vote on how we feel tonight.
Yeah, my only concern with that is if we're leaving the public meeting open and we vote, and then something comes up. In the public meeting that, you know. We didn't think of or something along that line. We'd have to, you know. Reverse our vote and then vote again.
Mm hmm.
I, I just assume just wait until the fifteenth and then we can. You know, we can say it when we're up there.
Okay. It sounds good, we'll wait and we'll wrap everything up on the fifteenth. So actually, I should make a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws. For April fifteenth. At. Six oh five. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
And Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And Amy's an I, so we'll continue that on April fifteenth.
Is, is there a reason why we're not doing April first?
Well, um. Lori said there's nothing on the agenda for April first.
Oh!
So since we have two meetings in April. On the fifteenth and we have town meeting, if we so choose tonight and forward everything to the fifteenth. Then we can skip April first. Lori was on board with that if we were.
Okay.
Does anybody feel the need to meet on April fir- first? Cause I could put them on April first if we wanna. Talk about them again. No.
No, I'm fine with it.
I'm not jumping in.
Alright, so then next on the agenda is the discussion of the MVP support letter. For the Pierce Blake Street Streetscape Improvement Project. I was away, I'm sure, wa- was, did anybody from the board attend the public meeting about the streetscape?
I did.
I did.
Okay, how did it go?
It went well. Um, I think some people brought up some interesting. Comments that we had maybe hadn't thought of. Um. But I think overall, you know. Most people were. Were like the idea. Um, I know we had talked about. Um. You know, what to do with the electrical. The, the wires and how much more it would be and how much more work it would be to. Put them underground and somebody else actually ma- made that. That comment. Um, why aren't we doing that? And then when we explained why, I think everyone agreed.
Didn't get a email from Norm, did it go to the whole board or just?
Yes, it went to the whole group.
Yeah, cause I did see that Norm brought up too, he would like to bury the wires still and he thought. We shouldn't rush. If they can possibly be buried, because it would make a big difference. Yeah.
Yeah, but at doubling the price of the project, I'm not sure that it's worth it.
Yeah.
That was a concern.
I'm not sure if everybody's heard the latest too, like it was a private public. Endeavor and um, the private group at the end of the street that owned two of the buildings are not gonna update their. Parcels anymore. So they're not, as of right now, they're not gonna take part. Lori reached out to them. And they said they weren't interested in continuing. So the project will be. Starting on Route twenty and it will probably go, what? Three quarters of the way down or two thirds of the way down towards Pear Street.
Hmm.
Yeah. So um, I can bring up the letter, Lori's asking for a letter. For the MVP grant, she still wants to go for the MVP grant. I guess she also told me today that she went in front of. Financial planning and appropriations and asked for the one point eight million. And they weren't. Strongly in favor of giving her the one point eight. So they dropped it to one point one. So they, she is gonna go forward to town meeting with one point one million, asking for capital money. And then the MVP grant. She's gonna go forward with, and I think she said today she's asking for like seven hundred and fifty thousand. In MVP money. So she's hoping to still get that. Did everybody have a chance to read that email? I can pull it up.
What's actually, is, what is the MVP? Um.
It's called municipal vulnerability preparedness. And there is a plan they did in the year twenty twenty where they met with staff, they met with residents. And then went through and said. What's important in town that the state's giving money and it's trying to offset climate change? So I looked up. What? A lot of the awards were for last year and they're for like culverts and dams and. That's what the money is going for, so. Lori's gonna try to get the grant saying that. Um, I don't want to say exactly what she's saying, I don't know word for word what she's saying, but the gist of it is. Getting rid of impervious pavement and putting in things like green. Like rain gardens, wells. So I don't know if it's gonna be a hard grant to get, but. Mm hmm. But she's gonna try for it, and she told me today that. Um, the grant is due on April fourth.
Where does it stand, in terms of the burying the power lines? Is there like a? Does somebody have a plan for that? And. If we, if this moves forward, would that preclude that from happening?
Yes, fortunately.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, what was that, An- Anthony?
I was asking, is there a plan for burying the power lines? And if so, just, I mean, what that may look like, and if this goes forward, the improvement on Blake. Um, would that preclude that from happening? So then. If it were to become possible for, in some manner, to bury the power lines, would we not be able to do it then?
Yes, only because the money is going forward to new sidewalks, so the best time to bury the poles. Would be as we're ripping up the sidewalks, or else it'd be a waste of money to rip them up again, we'd have to pay to do it again, so this is the best time. We were told there'd be a fifty thousand dollar charge for Verizon or National Grid. To give us an estimate of how much it would be to bury the poles. And there was an extra fifty thousand that we could have done that. But then I don't know when the decision was made not to do that, because there was quite a few people on the committee that actually did want to do it.
Well, I think the other, the other problem was the fact that um, it messes up the time, the timeframe. Of the project, right? Because. It, um, the electric company has up until, I believe, a year and a half to get back to us on what the quote would be. So, you know, now there's, you know. With all the stuff going on with grants and everything else, it was a concern that there may not be any grants come twenty twenty six.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and concerns with the project is um. Four West Main Street too, we don't know what we're gonna do with Four West Main Street. And um, now that, that the private person has backed out, I almost wonder if we are rushing too fast. You could do it next year, but. But tonight, for the letter, Lori just wants the MVP. She wants our approval to go for the MV, or our support to go for the MVP grant.
Do you have to spend that grant money within a certain um, uh, time period? Or can you bank it?
That would be a question for Lori, I don't know. And she did, I did ask her if you could go for it every year. She said you could, but I don't know if the state would give it to you every year, because a lot of the grants last year. Did go for culverts and like three million dollar projects. So you would almost wonder what is the best use for the MVP grant in Northborough, is it? A seven hundred thousand dollar grant, or would it be better on culverts? So that is. A question. But I don't have the answer.
Yeah, and Anthony, to your question, because I deal with grants through the MBTA through my real job. And um. They, they. If you don't use it, or you, your, your project isn't started within that year. Um, and you don't use that money uh, at all, they have a tendency to not give you any more money.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, now, now they could have given that money to another. Uh, municipality that could have used it.
Mm hmm.
And so it actually makes getting grants harder in the long term when you do that.
It's too bad, I know Lori's worked really hard on this, but all of a sudden, all these pieces started falling apart. Recently. They do have to redo the plan if um, the private developer is not gonna. Do her share, I think it's gonna change some of the plan. I don't know, I'm assuming they're working hard at it right now to have it for our next meeting. There is a Blake Street um. Group that meets and Bill and I are both on it. We meet, what is it, the second Tuesday?
Yep.
Of the month. So at the last meeting. They didn't know if um, the private developer was gonna be on board or not. And unfortunately. She came back and said she's not.
I think I'd love to hear more about why or what, what, you know. Not that we. Uh. Not that they have to give us a reason, but. Certainly like to hear more about what that might be, if there's a way that we can uh, maybe. You know, meet halfway on some things.
Right. And that's another question, like I know. That. Our group. Gave her a deadline, you're gonna do it or you're not gonna do it, but we need to know now, because we're going for grants. You wonder if. She wasn't pushed into a corner and we said, we're gonna go for it next year. If she had more time, if she could have convinced the owner to do it. But we don't, we don't know the reason.
Yeah.
I don't think she even gave Lori the reason.
Yeah.
I'm kinda torn, I'm always torn on this one, but it's the more unknowns that kinda reveal themselves. It just seems like we don't have, it, 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 there's too much that's. You know, too many balls are in the air at this moment, in my opinion, in terms of starting to engage in that.
I just feel that, that there's gotta be some momentum and a stake has to go in the ground somewhere. And then at some point, you know. I do feel like we get going, we get going on things, but we never actually finish or accomplish, because we're always waiting for something else. And I feel like this is the first. Significant effort that is made to do something in our downtown.
And that makes sense too.
It's hard. And it's hard to shut back the clock too, because you wonder. If we knew the developer was gonna back out, would it be better to spend the two million dollars burying the poles on Main Street, you know, something that really would? Show. Like where's the best place for the two million? But Lori took what she was given and she, you know, she went forth with what was assigned. So this is where we are.
And I don't even think if those, you, you, I don't think that. I don't know if that funding would go towards burying poles and then you're still stuck with the electric company doing. Whatever they need to do. I mean, I'd love to have this buried more than anybody.
Right?
Yeah.
Let me see if I have her letter, I'm gonna open it up.
Can we do a adopt a poll program? Adopt a, uh, adopt a poll.
Right, I think it's like two hundred and fifty thousand a poll.
There you go.
I don't think we'd get many adoptees.
Couple of bottles of wine a week, right?
Yeah, I'm just gonna. Open it. She, I thought I had it open. Okay. Okay, here we go. It is easy when you're on the spot. I always think I'm faster. Than I am. Okay, I can see everything. Okay, here we go. Does everybody see it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so this is Lori's letter, she wanted to know. If we would give her approval. And we do actually have, it's due on April first, so if we wanted to. April fourth, so if we wanted to meet on April first, we could ask her more questions. Um, about it. But if we didn't want to meet on April first, so we, we could meet just for that one small thing. Or we can decide tonight. To approve, disapprove, or edit the letter. In my mind, I'm not sure how I feel about the project in general. But this is just to support. The grant if town meeting goes forward and approves the project.
Yeah, and I would think you would want the grant, right? If town meeting approves the project, I would hate to say, you know, we could have had an extra seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that. Now we don't have.
Right, I agree, that's what I'm thinking. Like she wasn't asking us to approve, disapprove, it's gonna go to town meeting.
Yep.
But if it does go to town meeting, you know, she wants to go for the grant.
Mm hmm.
And she said even if it didn't pass town meeting, because it might not. She still might use the seven hundred and fifty thousand she got from the grant to do some small things.
Mm hmm.
She wouldn't be able to do the whole project. But she would do what she could with the money.
Oh, there it is.
I just got email, I wanted to make sure it wasn't from Lori.
Does, does it seem like she should say something in there? About what the grant really does as far as climate or anything? Or is that in the application?
The application definitely would, she's working with the Beta Group. And they're giving her. All the information about the green.
Transformed downtown. I still feel like we should. Say something about that. Sustainable features.
Bottom, I think, green infrastructure. Electric charging stations. LED lighting, because this is for like shared parking.
Rooftop solar, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, redevelopment too. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, overall, I like it. Okay. So I'll tell Lori to go forward. With the ladder.
I think I'm a yes at this point.
Right, and then it's up to, I think it's up to the board of selectmen to push it forward onto the town meeting. And then town meeting to vote on it. But. But our ask is only for the grant letter.
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm. Okay. Alright. So it sounds like the majority of people are okay with Lori using the ladder?
Yep.
Okay, I'll stop sharing that. We'll let her know. Next on the agenda. Is A and Rs, we're gonna have an A and R at our next meeting on the fifteenth. Um, they're still working in-house with it, so they haven't submitted it. Does anybody have any um, subcommittee updates?
Do not.
No.
Nope.
No, I heard um, Lori wrote here that the ZBA is canceled on April twenty second. Oh no, March twenty fifth. Was canceled and we have master plan this Thursday on the twentieth. That's all we have though. Anybody have anything else they want to add? Right now, I'll leave it that we won't be back until April fifteenth. If Lori has something come up. That she needs us to meet on the first, she'll let us know, but as of right now, she doesn't foresee anything.
Okay. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Alright, I'll see you guys on the fifteenth of April.
Okay, thanks Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Aye, thank you.